Good afternoon, everyone. This is Mayor Cyril Jefferson convening, especially meeting of the High Point City Council. We have five councilmembers here with us, those being Councilmember McKeever, Councilmember Andrew, Councilmember Harmon, Mayor Pro Tem Michael Holmes, as well as myself. We have an agenda that will call for some overviews and updates, but prior to doing that, I'm actually gonna call and see if there's anyone who wishes to make a motion to adopt our agenda for today's meeting. So move, that's a motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Holmes, second made by Councilmember McKeever. So any discussion on the motion to adopt our agenda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any against, the ayes have it and we have our agenda. First item for discussion is 2024-317. It's a department's overview from our Human Resources Director, Angela Kirkwood. Angela, I'll pass it to you.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Angela Kirkwood, Director of Human Resources. Today is my opportunity to share with you what we do. Our motto in the HR department is to recruit, reward, retain, and retire. That is our main objective where we take care of an employee from the beginning of their career to the end of the career. So by effectively managing our HR programs, we can attract and retain top talent, enhance the employee experience, and promote a healthy work-life balance. HR is committed to driving organizational success and fostering employee well-being through a diverse range of roles and services. So I'm gonna walk you through those. In terms of how the department is laid out, these are the actual sections in my department: Talent Acquisition, Learning and Development, excuse me, Learning and Organizational Development, HR Information Systems, Employee Relations, Employee Engagement, Benefits Administration, Safety, Health, and Wellness, and we have an employee clinic. And I will stand over here, so you can see. My apologies. In terms of how we are structured, you have my role as the Director. I have an Admin Assistant, Talent Acquisition, there are two employees there. I have a Talent Acquisition Business Partner and a Talent Acquisition Analyst. Learning and Development Section, I have a Learning and Development Organizational Consultant. HRS, I have a Senior HR Analyst. Engagement, everyone's involved in that. And Benefits Administration, I have a Senior HR Analyst and two Support Benefits Analysts. And then I have an Assistant HR Director who manages employee relations as well as supervising the clinic staff. And in the clinic, we have a Wellness Analyst, a Work Comp Analyst, Certified Medical Assistant, and two Safety Officers. Talent Acquisition. In this section, the Talent Acquisition Business Partner, as well as that Talent Acquisition Analyst, they're tasked with identifying, attracting, and acquiring new talent to the city. They're also responsible for improving that candidate onboarding experience, helping build a high-performance workforce, fostering collaboration with our internal and external partners, Business High Point, NC Works, Guilford Works, Goodwill of Triad, Handshake, which, you know, connects us with all of the universities and colleges, and then with the marketing and the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion section. They're also responsible for implementing innovative recruitment strategies to ensure that we reach diverse candidates as well. They also respond to market changes, need to know when businesses are closing, you know, when students are transitioning out of college, and hosting job fairs at those critical times throughout the year. In the last fiscal year, we had posted 180 jobs and filled 171 of those jobs. The part that kinda keeps us in flux is we also had like 289 positions that were vacated due to voluntary or involuntary resignations or retirements. So it's like you're constantly trying to catch up, and then there are other things. So this is a very difficult market, so it's very important that I have the right people in these positions to help with those strategies to build positions. In the Learning and Development Section, the consultant that will work here, this position is currently vacant, they are tasked with doing assessments so that we can find out what are the skill gaps in the organization, and you do that through surveys and interviews. And based on those assessments, you design training programs focused on skill enhancement, career advancement, and leadership development. They're also going to be promoting training that supports a diverse and inclusive workforce. This person is also responsible for the annual LMS compliance training, and those are based on each person's job classification. It's different if you're a Director versus a Supervisor, because there are certain skills that we wanna just make sure that people understand and understand the policies that they must be in compliance with. And the other aspect of this job, which makes it also another critical role, is building those strong relationships with the departments to enhance the trainings that are offered. And by meeting with department directors, you can, this person has the opportunity to customize training based on the needs of the department. If there's an issue with, you know, conflict management, or if there's an issue with trust or whatever, then you build that training based on what the needs are in the department.
Angela?
Yes, sir.
How granular will you guys get in LND? Will it just be a departmental training program, or will you be able to get, focus on the individuals if they're in leadership, planning for succession, and developing training programs for individuals for advancement?
That's a really good question, and being that the Learning and Development position is vacant at this time, based on that first initial assessment when that person comes in, will determine the phases of how they'll deploy the training. I know it's really critical for us to focus on customer service and focus on building trust in the organization, so those are some critical development opportunities that will occur at the beginning, but that training will be available for succession planning once we find out, can this be a one-person show, or will we need to come back and say, this person needs some support in order to take this to another level?
Yeah, I just know that when you're looking at LND, when you're looking at that person responsible for organizational, at the entire organizational enterprise level, it's really difficult to make sure that training, each department executes without buy-in from the individual department heads.
Exactly.
So I'm assuming that there will be some initial interface between department heads and the LND Director to design that department overview.
Yes. That's gonna be the structure, the first thing. That's one of the, within the first 90 days of that person coming on board, is meeting with each and every one of the directors and doing an assessment to find out, from a training standpoint, what do you need, what do your employees need, what type of supervisory leadership development do you need? Then I have the HR Information Systems Section, and then in this position, my Senior HR Analyst really is responsible for the integrity of all of the personnel data related to every single employee in the city. They run all of my analytics reports, provide training on our technical systems. We have multiple systems to accomplish the HR work. We have a time and attendance, a performance management, applicant tracking. So when we transition to that new ERP system that you guys just saw in a couple of council actions, then we'll be able to collapse this and have more efficiency, but right now, I do just have one person managing all of these systems and ensuring that the integrity of the data is there. And this person will also work with the TPA when we do our class and comp study. And we do that class and comp study annually, where we evaluate one-third of the job classifications to ensure that our salaries are competitive in the market, and this is something the city has been doing for over 20 years, and we're gonna continue to do this. And with the cost proposal that I put out there for us to have the opportunity to have a different consultant firm come in and evaluate, this will be an opportunity for us to see what are some best practices in this space that we could be doing different, that will help us address not only, you know, compression, but also looking at market analysis in the various different areas. And if that one-third is the best model, you know, so it'll be a conversation. Our kickoff meeting starts tomorrow. In terms of employee relations, here, this is where the Assistant Director meets with all of the department heads, managers, supervisors at every single level in the organization, and provide them with guidance related to employee relation issues. Manage all of the disciplinary complaints, the grievances, and then if there are any charges outside, those types of charges are managed with consultation of the city attorney and Cherie, who is the assistant in this role. And again, it's really trying to make sure that all of the managers understand that there are policies, and we want all of the employees to understand the policies. So when they come onboard, they get the sandbook, and it has all of the city policies that they're responsible for. And it's an opportunity during orientation for them to ask questions, find out what the expectations are as far as the city. And then, you know, as we transition to the other side, the engagement piece, it's not all about discipline. Discipline is just so that people understand what the expectations are with us as an employer, but then there's the fun side. That's the engagement piece, where we want people to know that we value and appreciate you, thanks for choosing us as your employer of choice. And so that's where you have the opportunity for all these engagement activities. We do an annual Friends and Family Baseball Day, which is next Thursday, the 15th, and I have 899 folks signed up, so this is pretty impressive. We do a Public Service Recognition Week, which is five days of different activities, again, recognizing city employees for their contributions and their efforts to the city, and that's normally kicked off with a proclamation from the mayor to the manager. We have an annual employee appreciation luncheon, and this year, we'll be doing something different. We'll, where we will be recognizing employees that reached their milestone years of service. Historically, it's been kind of a passive engagement piece, and we've elevated that with a new employee recognition team, where we have pins, where, and I'll leave these so you can see them, so that you can see that, you know, we will have a ceremony where we will acknowledge every employee from five years to 45 years, and give that personal touch to let people know, we value and appreciate you, and thanks for choosing the city. And we'll also have a little light reception for them as well. In the Benefits Administration, and here, I have a Senior HR Analyst and two Support Individuals, and they manage all the health and dental benefits, supplemental insurance, flexible spending accounts, tuition reimbursement, our employee referral program, retirement processing, so all of the HR benefits, they're completely responsible for managing and ensuring that employees understand their benefits, answer all their questions through the various different work sessions throughout the year and new employee annual orientation. And in terms of us being a little bit proactive, you know, it's been five years, and we built up an insurance reserve fund, and some of you who have been on council, you know, understand that process that we have gone through. Well, we have successfully transitioned to the self-funding model for our health insurance, and that is to help us reduce our healthcare costs and administrative costs. I will probably have metrics about six months from now to be able to show what has been the significance of us transitioning to this model, because here, you're just paying for claims as they occur versus, you know, putting money up front, like you do car insurance and never have an accident, but you've had to pay. So it's similar to that. This way, with this new model, we're just paying as we go. And in terms of the benchmarking that we do, I meet with the Budget Director probably twice a year, and we will look at the benefits and perks that are out there in the industry to make sure that when we start on that budget process, we're being competitive. And some of the changes that we have made over the years have been in the 401K, in our holidays, caregiver leave, parental leave, so it's really, really important that we benchmark against other organizations our size and in the Triad to ensure that what we're offering is competitive, equally as competitive as what our neighbors are offering. And we have the opportunity to do that through our class and comp study, as well as through the budget benchmarking that we do. And then the Safety, Health, and Wellness Team. Again, this team is managed by my Assistant Director, Cherie. She has two safety officers that manage the safety program. They do all the risk assessments, the safety training sessions, the safety audits, and they review the emergency plan annually to ensure that this is a safe workplace, and everyone who comes to work, you can return at the end of the day the way you showed up, healthy. That's the goal. And then I have a Wellness Analyst who offers fitness classes, health workshops, and these are all for physical and mental well-being, with the intent of, we're trying to ensure that employees have that opportunity to focus on, how can I be my best self? And sometimes you need to sit in sessions, you need to have access to mental health care, you need to have access to financial workshops to help you get through some of those day-to-day things. And so we try and make sure that we offer a variety of different workshops to help our employees through our wellness program. And then I have the Workers' Comp Analyst, who works with our TPA, the North Carolina League, who administers and manages our Workers' Compensation Claims Program, but this Work Comp Analyst works with them to ensure that all of the paperwork is turned in on time, people are given the care that they need to rehabilitate back into the workforce within a timely matter, and just having someone who stands between the gap between a TPA and, you know, the employee getting back to work. I'm trying to go as fast as I can, but I save the best for last. We have expanded our employee health clinic, and previously, this is another one of those projects where it took five years for it to come to fruition, but previously, when you went to the clinic, it was only so that that nurse could take care of occupational injuries. With the expansion of the clinic, we now offer primary and acute care, where that's vaccinations, flu shots, strep, test for strep, test for flu, COVID-19 tests, you do lab work, we do our drug screens for our new hires, we do the drug screens for the random employees that are part of our random program. And in terms of the benefits of this program, we have 1,286 employees that are on my traditional healthcare plan. It's free to all 1,200 employees, plus employees. I have 85 employees that are on the high deductible plan, they pay $5. So it is not cost prohibitive for anyone, and for you to be able to get primary and acute care at work, all the studies have shown this reduces time, time from loss at work, reduces absenteeism, and overall productivity in the work environment. And we launched this new contract with Atrium in January, and since then, we've had 519 employees go to the clinic, 262 were primary and acute care, that other number is for the employees that were just regular work injuries. That's an average of 86.5 visits a month, and that's saving employees up to date, that's been $9,170, because they are not paying that $35 copay out of their pocket, which, so our goal through all of these programs is, yes, sir?
That $9,170 is per employee per year, you think?
That's from that 262 that have gone to the clinic, that's that $35 that they would have paid. So the cost, where we will see the significant cost, is when I get that report to say, how much did we actually pay outside of our administrative fees by having the self-funded model? Instead of us paying this flat amount for every employee, that's where we're really gonna see the savings, so I'm excited to be able to bring those back and share that information. But I will say that these are the programs that we have in HR. These programs, they take you from the life cycle from the beginning to the end, and that is why the motto is, "We recruit, reward, retain, and retire." Questions?
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from council?
I just wanna say, it's a very comprehensive overview of what HR does. I know sometimes we just, HR seems like the cops.
You know.
It was good to know that you guys are managing the entire employee lifecycle, and I think understanding how HR touches an employee from the time they come into the door and the time they leave, I think is absolutely beneficial for everyone to know.
Yeah, I'll add that some of the items that really jumped out, us being self-funded in terms of our health coverage there, the clinic. I think these are solutions that you can tell you all have been studying to see how we can remain as competitive as possible. They're also the kind of solutions that probably took a bit of time to think through, design. And I think that's a testament, Angela, to how long you've been here, and how long you've been invested in seeing our workforce and our organization become a very strong one. I'd be remiss if I didn't ask and at least bring up for discussion what we've been discussing in terms of vacancies, and that continues to be a struggle. And you spoke to it a little bit earlier.
Yes.
In terms of the rate of turnover, retirements, things of that nature. Can you, just for sake of this group, and I know we're limited on time, but if you can speak to how as an organization, we're working our best to try to address some of those vacancies? I know I get comments from folks in particular regarding public safety, about addressing some of those vacancies, because folks are worried that you won't have enough officers to answer calls, things of that nature. Do you mind speaking to that?
Absolutely. I would say that one of the first things that we have continued to be consistent about doing is meeting with the department directors that have the greatest need. Public Service Robbie, my new talent acquisition business partner, Nicole, she has sat down with the directors, she's had the opportunity to find out what their pain points are, what are some of the strategies that she can put in place to help narrow that time, that gap that goes from the times and places in application online in our system, and then through that process. Is there anything that we can do internally to close that gap? Continue to have those partnerships in the community to make sure that we are connecting at every level, and she's doing some outreach even with high schools. So with the high schools, the So with the high schools, the community colleges as well as the four-year colleges. And then also partnering with Goodwill, the Triad, Business High Point, and making sure that we have a presence in the community at various different places. And probably when the fall rolls around, it might be that opportunity because she and I are, you know, still in the beginning phases. I've had the opportunity of having Nicole on my team for 90 days, but it was definitely a really good hire because it's someone to look through a different lens of how do we close the gap? What can we do as, as an organization? And, you know, not being facetious, but I did put these, we are hiring cards because you can take those with you and when people ask about...
Because you want us to apply for something?
No, no, no. The trick with that, it has a QR code on it. So if someone asks you about city jobs, you know, just, hey, well, you know, go ahead and use your QR, your phone, swipe my QR code. It takes them right to all of our openings. So that is something Mr. Ferguson helped us with and so, love the marketing team. But yes, we're just trying to be a little bit more strategic and intentional in terms of how we go about filling the opportunities and also looking at, do we have to have some of the tools in place that we currently have in place? You know, because historically it was, oh, you need a four-year degree for this, you need a four-year degree. You know, at one point in time that was important, now we're scaling back and say, what's the equivalent? What is that equivalent high school diploma and education? So I'm having her look at quite a few different things, but we definitely have some new strategies that we're looking at and then we want to implement some of those changes.
Yeah. Mike, well, I'm sorry, one, one second. I think, thank you for that. That's fairly helpful. You said Nicole's been here about 90 days?
Yes.
Would, can I ask this question and maybe it's just, it's not been long enough to, to be able to answer this, but at an enterprise level, what's been the general trend in terms of buy-in from directors and leaders to what you all are trying to do to try to make those adjustments that can improve processes?
They're all in.
Everyone's all in.
Everyone is all in. Yeah, you know, and I, I really appreciate the collaboration that I have with the department directors as well as when they share their experiences from agencies they've come from or things that they've heard about in terms of how we can do things different. So, you know, I, I love Robbie for that because he shoots me a lot of really great ideas and we are definitely being responsive to those types of inquiries.
Real quick, I know, what is, what is the current physical recruiting radius? Like how far in terms of if there's a job fair that's happening in the States and where, how far out are you guys going? I know, I know handshake, oftentimes they have a lot of fairs on campus. Are you guys hitting those as well?
Yes, as far as, right now it's Greensboro, Greensboro and Winston-Salem as far as the four-year colleges that we're reaching out, but we're also collaborating with GTCC as well, which is right here in our backyard, which is very easy and trying to get connected with the high schools that are right here. Because we have to remember that not everybody chooses that path of going to college. So there is a group of individuals that, you know, we need to target and make sure that we talk about the city, you guys talk about the city and let people know.
I know we've had some apprenticeships. Any thought of expanding the occupations and the registered apprenticeships that we do have?
Yes, and that's part of the conversation I had with Nicole in terms of expanding so that we're, because the partnership that we have with the gap program is just for the high school students. But there is another, you know, segment of individuals, I think in a 20 to 35-year-old. So we're going to look at expanding our program.
May I approach him with one other item to mention as it relates to the recruitment piece? Depending on the department, when you think about public safety, they, there are job fairs, they might reach a little bit further than with HR. They might be participating with like different military installations as folks are transitioning careers to do outreach there, reaching with different colleges. Some are doing out of state as you recruit other individuals that might be retired from other states that may want to come. We've also had some success with the transportation side of things where people are hiring in other states and they might want to come here and work for our system. So depending on the particular area, what the needs are, we might have some of the further outreach than what traditionally see in HR.
Well, thank you. Sorry, Councilman Andrew, did you have some...
No, I was just reminding that we seem to have shorted the, we continue to short the attorney on this. We need to compress some time.
Yep. We were riding the same pace, we were transitioning. Did you have something you were about to close out with?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Our next agenda item is regional water resources update from our assistant city manager, Damon DuKane. Damon, how are you doing today?
I'm doing well there, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. As everyone knows, I'm the Noah Lyles of presentations. So I'll just get started. I'm going to start off, I do want to recognize Robbie Stone in the back there to keep me honest throughout this. We're gonna, we're gonna cover some, we're gonna cover some ground and none of this is very simple. So bear with me, please ask questions as we go there. And I'm going to start with, with a little bit of background information. Most of you have seen this before. High Points Water, we have two water sources. We have City Lake and Okaloa Lake. We have two, two raw water pump stations. Raw water is exactly what it sounds like. It hasn't been treated yet, it's coming straight from the lake to the treatment plant. Three elevated storage tanks, a ground levered water storage tank. And we are 19% owners of Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority and we receive 2.28 million gallons a day of water from them. That's what MGD stands for, actually. Spelled it out on this slide. The city owns the Ward Water Treatment Plant. We treat an average 13.4 million gallons a day. It's permitted for 24 and it began, it began operation in 1980. So that's, you know, overall big picture, High Points Water Supply and Water Treatment Options. Okay? On the, on the wastewater side, we have two wastewater plants and we're going to talk a little bit about regional. That was in the title of the presentation is, we're already a regional provider on the wastewater side. So our east side wastewater treatment plant is permitted for 26 million gallons a day. You can see the average flow there. We have interlocal agreements that have been approved by council over the years with Archdale, Jamestown and Sedgfield for those amounts. Sedgfield is not, the town of Sedgfield or the city of Sedgfield, it's actually Sedgfield Sanitary Sewer District is who we have our agreement with. Began operating in the 1920s, underwent a major upgrade in 2005. And so that's a big plant and it discharges into the Cape Fear River Basin. And that matters. Why? Because our west side wastewater treatment plant, smaller plant, 10 MGD. We also have a regional service we provide there to Trinity in the form of 1 million gallons a day. They're not delivering that to us yet, at least not all of it. They have a large project undergoing, it's going to bring it to us. Again, operating in the 1930s. It has more recently undergone an upgrade and it discharges into the Yadkin-PD River Basin. Okay, that's going to matter in a little bit. So we have, we have the same service we provide, we discharge into different basins and along with different basins come different regulatory requirements. So talking about PTRWA and its history, for those of you who may be familiar, started in the late 1980s. These six communities on the bottom participated in the founding of that at those percentages. So the 12 million gallons a day that the, that the treatment plant can produce, these six communities are the, are the owners and the current members, that's how much they're entitled to out of that plant. That also included the construction of the Randall and Lake Dam. It took about 24 years or 25 years to get the dam built and to get this project done. So when it started in the eighties, it took a couple of decades more to get it done. So this is from a building to a, to a crescendo here. Yeah, that's exciting. Every council member is excited. So I'm, I'm going to focus on water for a moment. So we've talked about what we have and who we provide it to and what we're part of. And I'm going to talk about what these regional topics are because everyone in the region, when I talk about the region, I have a map in a moment, it's the Piedmont Triad. But the map is going to indicate something that you're not used to seeing. It's, it's not just Winston-Salem, High Point, Greensboro, it's much larger than that based on recent economic development wins for the state of North Carolina. So staff has been in front of you several times talking about PFOA, PFOS, those PFOS chemicals, the forever chemicals and their impact on water treatment, water delivery. So we know now that we're going to have to be fully compliant with PFAS in the next three to five years, right? We have three years monitoring and then two years to get in compliance. And so being part of PTRWA, they're moving forward with enhancing their plant to treat out those forever chemicals. So we own 19% of that plant and that means our portion of the upgrade just for that portion, just for that, just to upgrade that treatment is $16,150,000. That's for a 12 MGD plant and we're only using 2.28 of that. So in the near future, and I'll, I'll hit on this on the summary slide in a few minutes, that means it's just over a million dollars a year debt service to us to make sure that the water we receive from them, that we've built and purchased is going to be compliant. Okay? We still have our own Ward Water Treatment Plant that we have to deal with. We know one thing that we can do to become compliant in the very near future, and we're doing this right now, is to switch our source water from City Lake, which has PFOA, PFOS in it, to Okaloa, which does not. That's helpful in two ways. We have to switch anyway because we have to do the dam project, but it also gets us to a compliant level and then we can work on our treatment when City Lake comes back online in the future. But if you take those numbers, the overall for 12 million gallons a day is $85 million. Our plant is 24 million gallons, so it's twice that amount in today's dollars. So $170 million just to treat out forever chemicals. It's on the horizon and council needs to be aware. We talk about current growth areas. So PTRWA is also increasing the size of their treatment plant. We have enough water from PTRWA, so we're not participating in that expansion, but we have to participate in the treatment expansion. Does that make sense? Okay. Good. Future and current growth areas. I think everybody is familiar with boom, you know, Toyota, Wolf Speed, and I'll show you a map. It's not great, but we'll see it here in a second. Along with Greensboro providing the water to allow those projects to be won by the state of North Carolina, there has to be somewhere to receive the water once it's been used. So the water was the gift that got, got him here, sewer is the gift that keeps giving. So there is a pretty significant challenge ahead for this region on how are we going to handle the wastewater needs that are coming from all of that growth? And as you all know, it's not just the business itself that brings a need, it's all those businesses that support that and it's all the human beings and the processes and those things that are coming, that are going to work in those places and live here and do those things here as well. So PTRWA has been leading those discussions and those discussions are based on a, on a study that was performed by the state called the Regional Water and Wastewater Conceptual Plan, US 421 corridor. It was kind of a rush job by the state. The state's original approach was, let's let these communities get together and kind of figure this out. Liberty is not as equipped to handle this type of issue as Greensboro is. You know, High Point and Archdale can't figure that out on their own. So the state stepped in, got with a group of consultants and completed this study. There are various scenarios and recommendations. It's available online to read. There are hundreds of pages of it. I have two pages from the executive summary. And basically what it says is regionally, based on this study, not everything's been verified, to deal with the water concerns for the next 25 years as this growth occurs, it's going to require $465 million worth of investment in this region. On the sewer side, it's going to require $2.6 billion. Of that, there's a table in there that shows that High Point, depending on what path we choose and what we do, could be on the hook for $900 million of that. That is a lot of money. And how is that going to be handled? Where's it going to be worked through? It has to be done regionally. Economy and scale is the only way to accomplish that. And I think we all agree that to handle it as partners is far better than trying to handle it as competitors. Greensboro is basically out of wastewater treatment capacity as far as these projects are concerned. They're a major driving force in this. They have the biggest stake. Their portion of PTRWA's expansion and, and treatment is, is over $125 million. So we're talking, these things are happening, they're real. We know that there's going to have to be investments that are made in the short term. But as I stated, this is a map from that state report. And if you look here, this is the entire area. So Ashboro, you've got Liberty, Ramseur, here's, you know, High Point, Greensboro, Archdale and others. This little $60 million line here is a small portion of the, of the, one of the projects that could potentially be done where High Point, we wouldn't continue to upgrade and upsize our, our east side plant. Instead, we would divert flow to a regional plant in Ashboro. Now, why Ashboro? Well, a couple of reasons. Geographically, it makes sense. It's downhill, it's in the same basin as all of this flow needs to go because we talked about those regulatory concerns. They also have a plant that is in need of upgrading. So the timing of the expenditure and the location of the expenditure makes total sense to be able to provide the services needed in this area. You can pick up the smaller communities like Liberty, everybody contributing together. And so if Ashboro's going to do that, does it make sense that Ashboro own and run the plant? Well, probably not because then you're putting the burden up front on the citizens of Ashboro. So what has been talked about, and there's an item on your agenda tonight, are there any questions on the map before I move on? Okay, great. So the PTRWA members, and you saw them before, the original six, have been in discussions with these four and others, as well as the state, as well as some representation, representation from the federal government through the help of TRUBIC. John Harster has been very helpful and very conscientious about bringing everyone together to have these discussions about the feasibility of Ashboro joining PTRWA and then PTRWA is an organization building the regional plant. So the item that's on the agenda tonight is a no-cost MOU to the, for the city to agree to that says, hey, as a founding member of PTRWA, we're interested in learning what the impacts would be of Ashboro joining PTRWA. What does it mean financially? What does it mean representation-wise? Does this, do the results and the claims made in the study, do they make sense? So that's what's on your agenda tonight. I know council member Moore, council member Andrew participated in the PTRWA strategic planning meeting. This was kind of all discussed there. It's been very methodical and it's been going on for quite some time. So staff, of course, recommends it and we appreciate you all supporting it as it comes forward tonight. Last slide before questions, the official question slide, upcoming consideration and updates. We just talked about the PTRWA item, city participation in water treatment upgrades. We talked about that. We know we're on the hook for $16,150,000 with PTRWA. We're going to have to figure that out. That means in, in rough terms, it could be a 2% increase to water sewer rates. It could be a lot of mechanisms. So we're working with the budget office and Bobby Fitchjohn, our finance director, to come up with some options for council to consider moving forward. And we're going to have to continue those discussions as we look at our own infrastructure as well. PFOS, the city attorney is supporting us in, through settlements, any litigations and so some of the funding, hopefully in the future, will be coming from the companies that provided these chemicals to us in the first place, right? And it only makes sense that if they've settled that, and so we're working through those claims. Robbie and his staff are providing information to the city attorney's office and our contract attorneys to make sure that we're accounting for every penny that's involved in that so we can recoup those dollars as well. So that's not being overlooked. Other emergent contaminants. We focused a lot on emergent contaminants on the water side of things. Those same contaminants are a problem on the wastewater side. They're not yet regulated, but they will be in the future. And so staff stay on top of that. We'll be sure to bring those to you as they come forward. That'll be a, a multi-year process, but we need to be aware of it now and we need to start planning for those actions in the future. Thank you.
Damon, thank you. In light of time, I'll ask that council members focus their questions on the item that's going to come up in this evening's agenda, which is the MOU with Ashboro potentially and just sort of considering the fact of them joining PTRWA. That said, are any council members that have any questions or comments or concerns about that particular item?
The participation of bringing Ashboro in and also any other participation as we go forward for a cost of, that'll be incurred in this new project. Will that break down in percentages that are set for ownership or how's it going to distribute out?
So don't know exactly how the governance will play out if, if Ashboro, you know, gained ownership. It wouldn't change our position on the water side of things, so we would still be, you know, we would still have our 2.26... know, we would still have our 2.26 or 8 million gallons a day. We'd still have our two members on the board. And by the way, our board membership, board membership is based on your ownership of PTRWA. So Greensboro has three representatives, we have two.
I guess I get that, but looking like down in the future, what happened with our ownership in the power plant and the fact that we were scheduled to have all that paid off, but some other members in smaller cities, whether it was due to change in economics and the way businesses closed and moved, and some cities struggled, and then we end up refinancing for another 20 or 30 years so they, you know, so they didn't lose their power. I mean, so we bailed them out. So that needs to be kept in mind as we continue to go forward.
Yes, sir, and we'll make sure that that, and that all the owners have a seat at the table through the whole feasibility study, and we'll make sure that that is taken into account.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Damon on this item? All right, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Next item we have is a closed session item. We need a motion to go into closed session. Motion for a close. Motion made by Mayor Protim, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Peters. Any discussion on the motion to go into closed session? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any against? The motion passes, and we will go into closed session.